I think you called my name. This is Stacy. I'm here. I can't really hear anything that's going on, just so you're aware. Yeah.
I can barely hear. If you call my name, Georgianne is here, but I can hear you.
I don't know if you said my name. I'm Gail. Yes, Gail's here.
Okay, thank you. So we start with public comments? Do we have public comments, please?
We do, but we also have the text.
Oh, sorry.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to George Anne McCann and the Department of Economic Security and the Confederation County Council. That happened in the August 11th conference meetings. Thank you from NATO for continuing the spirit of transparency. The format of the community health and public meetings. Good attendance today. See St. Peters, Duster, the Belt project. Again, the first giveaway of corporate wealth. I would like to know what we can turn on investment. Skipper, Austin Wolf. What they were turning on investments. Unity is, the county is a whole. City council is very busy. They're asking for a big construction state near the next building. It will be immediately for the board of aldermen, State of Peters. But if there is something to stack, it's going to close this. But we don't know what are these for investment. They're going to lose possibly a hundred or two thousand dollars annually.
Those projects will overcome 2020. But we've got a 2.8 million that's been committed. It's committed to about 40,000 in the process of $2.2 million. We've got a lot of additional that's actually coming. We've got the G and M expansion. We're wrapping up each area. Room has to go back to the corner. And then we've got the branch which is the recommended. Again, there's a perfect 2.8 million.
Does anybody have any questions for Julie? Any current enough questions?
Thank you. So just highlighting a couple of the building projects, Julie mentioned a couple of them. Work has started on the administration building project. I know because there's a lot of sign of my fall. And then the theme is progressing more or less on schedule. I noted in the report that there'll be some slight delay possibly in the receipt of the skylight for the patio, which could push the completion into December. But I'll hold a significant delay. There's a couple of pictures in the report there so you can see that it is progressing nicely. On the right, you can see the extent of the patio area and it's taking shape out. And then the interior there that they'll all be putting this room and that will help move the rad nails. And about the experience with the operating section, we are, we have opened up for our turn now for just our time service because actually with the school's research about having visitors in the building, we are working with the school as I highlighted here to be able to provide school materials that help the art her site as well. So we're excited to be able to do, to collaborate in that way. I will have, I'll likely be getting some more numbers for you at your next meeting in terms of both what we're seeing at work at farm and also at fusion, which is our current temporary location while the evidence flows. I noticed there we have distributed now over 40,000 masks for St. Charles County government. So thank you to St. Charles County for providing those. We'll need to receive an additional 10,000 and they are going quickly. On the second page of the report begins a fairly lengthy wrap-up of our summer challenge 2020. And it, I guess that's a super believable name. It was indeed a challenge to, for staff to get our traditional summer challenge translated over to a virtual environment. And they did a great job with that. And you can see some of the participant comments there. It was, it was well received and I think it really filled a real need in people's covers that were longer than normal. As the parents like to say, that didn't run forever. But and there was one of those comments here, my child is more ready for school. It's important to note the side of that, that that is the reason that libraries do summer program is to prevent that summer slide, which was even more important again because summer was longer. And you can see some metrics there from our participation survey as well. So you can see the response with that. And we highlighted a little bit there on our kind three marketing campaign. Personally, we have not out. There was an article on CL today, today, and also on KSP3. So it is sitting on the media outlet. So thanks for folks in the community that have been that far. And then I just wanted to, at the very last page of your community support, draw your attention to a couple of other events that the foundation is doing virtually. So there's virtual reunion night coming up on September 18th. And then a virtual walk, run, ride and read coming up the weekend of October 14th. So please do consider taking part in those. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Let's move on to the statistical report.
Okay, so as expected, we'd be open limited hours. And in the environments that we're in, there are a lot of statistics that are down from this point last year. But I wanted to highlight a couple. First of all, EVM eventually is up over 19%. But more significantly, if you go down the limit of their classes and event, you'll see that the number of classes of events offered is substantially, substantially lower. 530 a year today versus over 1,200 last year. But the decline in attendees is only down 1.4%. So it just shows a tremendously positive reception for our virtual lives of the event. So exciting to see. And I think it's very well one of those things that we use when we're out of the situation that we're currently in. I think we're seeing positive reception to operate.
Correspondence?
So there's a couple, on the agenda, there was correspondence from St. Peters regarding proposed industrial development project that you have there. And then also distributed at your place is the evening, you know, was correspondence that came in after the fact that it had already gone out. But it was one of which you were all copied. It's from the homeowners associations surrounding Artisler Road location. And then specifically in reference to the crosswalk between the Veterans Community Park and those neighborhoods and the library. And it's really just a FYI for you that they are asking for some additional 1500s of that crosswalk. And you were copied and we don't have the library.
Any other, no other correspondence? Let's move on to the agenda. Did everybody have a chance to review draft minutes of the August 11th, 2020? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved to a new draft. 11th meeting.
That was Gail that made the motion, correct?
Gail, was that you that made the motion? Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the August 11th, 2020 minutes, say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Motion has to be minutes approved. It's like no old business, so we'll move to new business. First item is 21-10 setting up. This is your 21 tax rate.
So I think Julie covered everything, but this is already going on a million of that. The figure 21 tax rate of 0.1996 per hundred dollars goes up.
So is there a motion at this time to approve agenda item 21-10?
I'd make a motion to set the tax rate at 0.1996 per hundred dollars of valuation.
Thank you, that was Joanne.
Yep.
Is there a second? Justin, is there any discussion regarding the setting up in tax rate? All those in favor of setting the fiscal year 21 tax rate at 0.1996 for 100 dollars of assessed value, say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Next agenda item is 21-11 election of officers.
Okay, according to your bylaws, the board nominates a new president, vice president, secretary and treasurer at the December meeting in these terms are for one year and begin on October 1st.
December.
September. And at the beginning on October 1st. And the closing of everything against that, we'll turn it over to you to do that.
So do we have any nominations for any of the offices? Hopefully everyone can hear me.
Nevada, I would say that, as you know, under the rules, as we go into this, there's an option for folks to stay on a second year in the position that they're in. And as I explained to some of the board members that I was, was able to speak to, I just am not in a position with my work to be able to give Jason the time he may want. So I am definitely not looking to do that. And I, I know in talking to Georgianne, because normally people move up. Georgianne said that with the COVID concerns, that she's not able to promise that she will be there. So I think if Georgianne can hear me, she had some thoughts about someone she wanted to nominate.
Georgianne, did you hear that?
So I was hearing Georgianne before and I don't hear her now. So I'm going to go ahead and do what I know that she-
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. I would like to place a name and nomination. First, I would like to commend Joanne Lycam for the superlative manner in which she has managed the office of president for the past year. And inasmuch as she has withdrawn her name from consideration for another term, I would like to nominate Nevada Smith to serve as president of the St. Charles City County Library Board of Trustees commencing on October 1st, 2020.
Are there any other-
Back it. Good.
Are there any other nominations for any of the other offices?
Yes, can you hear me?
Here you go.
It's Gail Zunwald. And I would like to nominate Georgianne McNabb if she wa, if she would accept this position of vice president.
As Joanne mentioned, my concern was that I can't be there personally. And I, I feel that in that respect, I might not be the best second to the president. But if, if need be, I will, I will serve.
Well, I would second Gail's motion.
Any other nominations for officer? I'm going to make a nomination of Stacy Alfred for treasurer.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? I think we have president, vice president and treasurer. If we're maybe looking for a nomination for secretary?
Hi, it's Stacy. I'd like to nominate Justin Collier for the position of secretary. I hope you heard that.
You heard it?
Okay, great. The sound has been-
Back it.
So I think we have a nomination for each of the offices. Do you have a nomination? Nomination?
Any additional nominations?
Any additional nominations for any of the offices for the library? For president, is it the first one or? Okay. Okay. So I'll start with president with the nomination for myself in terms of being served as president.
I think it's been on the list since like when, there's been a motion, there's been a motion and there's been a second, so I think.
All those in favor of looking at myself as president, say aye.
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 Is there any that are opposed? Obviously, I'm not going to vote myself. I'll take. Okay. And then it looks like I win. We'll move on to the vice president. We had a nomination of Georgianne McNabb for vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any that are opposed to appoint Georgianne as vice president? During that, it looks like Georgianne is appointed as vice president. With regard to secretary? We had an appointment of Justin Collier for secretary. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? During that, Justin Collier is appointed as secretary. And finally, with regard to treasurer, we had a nomination of Stacy Alvarez for treasurer. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Stacy Alvarez is appointed for treasurer. So I think we have a whole slate of officers for the next year. Moving on to agenda item 21-12.
Okay, so this is a request for a capital present, project budget adjustment for the repair work at the Catherine Lemon branch that focuses in on the repairs necessary to prevent in future water events like we have this spring. So just frequently, you'll recall that we did have a significant amount of water entered the building earlier in the spring and in May. And while that was being remediated and work was being done there, it was discovered that this was not a single occurrence and there had been ongoing water issues. And those needed to be remedied before we could move forward. And so we have been working with a day-end engineering firm to do that. And they will be providing a full detailed report. But what they have provided for us was a meeting and I'm surprised that is a cost estimate both for what needs to be addressed immediately in order for us to, to remedy the issues before we sort of put the building back together and reopen it. And then also a second cost estimate for what our some long-term issues that we built it, but I need to immediately. But we need to keep, to keep in mind that will need to be done eventually. So you do that. So what we are requesting here is that we would move forward with what needs to be done immediately. And the good news is there's no song songs, there's no trenching or anything like that. It is however, just under $200,000. And so what we're looking for today is, this is not the budget for the year 21 budget. So we could need a review authorizing a budget adjustment to allocate budgets from the general reserves for that person. We have with us a mentor from Mozak who can and I hope he can do this, talking through a little bit about what, what that word is.
Hey guys, here.
You can, thank you.
Alrighty, alright. So Mozak was out there last week, kind of take a look at the building. Currently what's going on as well is some history of some of the issues that were present. For the most part, the understanding that the building has been renovated and expanded a couple of times. What we kind of ended up determining was the majority of the problems are associated with the older section of the building. So with some further investigation, it was determined that the building does not have any waterproofing or through wall flashing where the brick, the exterior brick is attached to the CMU backup. So with that being said, the problems that are occurring are saturation issues as well as some water coming in from the foundation wall where the landscaping is up over that. So the budget presented currently for the immediate repairs are essentially to create a water barrier out of the windows that are there. The windows, the, the older windows at the building, or the old section of the building are missing end dams. And the system itself was designed to be watertight. And we've had experiences with actually both instances where we don't have waterproofing behind the masonry at the exterior. And we've dealt with windows of this nature where the, the anticipated water plane for the path and water to leave the window system does not work. So they don't have any end dams. If the water gets into the system, it leaks out around the corners. So essentially, the, the goal of this immediate repair budget would be to let seal all the windows at the existing building where we're having the problems, repair the emergency exits that are allowing some water in. And then we have a landscaping issue near the front of the building. I want to say it's the southwest area of the building. And then the foundation repairs would include XIPEX insulation, which is a waterproofing membrane on the interior side of the foundation, roughly five feet up the wall, and then a clear sealer on the exterior of the entire masonry area. And this would, in theory, prevent water saturating the masonry as well as restrict the water from soaking the foundational and seeping in through the cracks where they, where it's been observed recently.
Thank you. Any questions about that for Matt? So Matt, do we think that this will solve the future problems?
That's correct. We believe that this will solve the current issues that are, that are ongoing. And then the future repair budget was just, I, we have heard while onsite, there was no indication that any of the areas in the future budget are currently leaking. However, after we noted it, we discussed, it was discussed with the staff onsite. And we, and we just presented it there as well, just to keep in the back of your mind. The foundation repairs of the future budget would include the installation of the XIPEX and the clear sealer at the new section of the building that's currently not leaking. But the hope is that that continues. However, we always plan for worst case scenario.
Thank you.
And then sort of to follow up. So the action being requested is a budget adjustment. And we would, we're given, you know, back to the general contractor on this, the part of the part of the third agreement. So we're already mitigated as the most horrible general contractor. So we would not have to go to that point. They will work all the appropriate-
Just to be clear, we're only asking for the budget adjustment to be approved.
That's fair.
So the 108,000. I think we talked about the last thing, this is not covered by the current spread.
No, this is not, because this is actually addressing deficiencies of the original construction. So we did, we received some insurance for the damage.
Jason, what's the timeline?
So we actually don't have, well, actually, I guess I could ask Matt what the timeline would be.
Oh, I don't know that I'd be able to give you guys this super accurate timeframe. I might need to talk to your construction crew before we can potentially put together something for you to see what manpower they have and what their capabilities are. Work like this, I would anticipate the landscaping, everything, a couple of months, just depending on how big, how big of a crew they can get out there.
We did have John from Biggie Know-That had as well, so we are- We're adding him as a little panelist or a figure.
So I'd make a motion that we adjust the fiscal year 21 capital project budget with an amount of $230,000 to address the immediate repairs on the west with contingency, et cetera, for the Catherine Lemon branch.
Is there a second?
Stacy, seconds.
Is there any discussion regarding? All those in favor of moving the trustee adjustment for the year 21 capital, 5,000, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I think that's all that I have on my agenda. So at this point, I would introduce a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 Motion's been agreed to adjourn.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing in those sort of technical issues. We tried a different camera this time and worked as well. So we'll be back to the one that we had last month, the next time. But thank you.